Kierkowski.
Here.
Lorik.
Here.
Dukniak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Kuzikowski.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance. Any veterans in the group?
Ard is about to get here.
Tom, can you lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I just made that observation.
It's just too cold out there for people to come out today for a spring day. We're looking at the approval of minutes for the past two meetings.
Kuzikowski will make a motion to approve the minutes from 4:10:17 and 4:18:17.
Kiel, second.
Roll call.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, before we vote, I have to abstain on the 18th because I wasn't here, so I don't know if you want to separate them.
We can separate them.
Okay, just want to keep it clean.
Chris, can you?
Kuzikowski will make a motion to approve the council agenda meeting minutes from 4:10:17.
Kiel, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kierkowski.
Aye.
Kuzikowski makes a motion to approve the council minutes from 4:18:17.
Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kierkowski.
Staines.
Lorik.
Aye.
Great, thank you. First thing on the docket, we have a couple mayoral proclamations. Number four is an annual event we put on every year. The proclamation for poppy days held this May 5th, 6th, and 7th at the American Legion. With that, we do have a proclamation for the young lady. Kathryn, would you like to read it?
Certainly. Whereas the Oshlager, Dahman, American Legion posts and auxiliary 434 have set aside Friday, May 5th, Saturday, May 6th, and Sunday, May 7th, 2017, to honor all our veterans of all wars by distribution of poppies on these days on our city. And whereas the annual distribution of poppies is one of the American Legion posts and auxiliary's many veteran projects, of which we are proud, and whereas all money received from the distribution goes directly to the following, 60% of all money received will be distributed for direct aid to veterans and their families in need in the City of Oak Creek. Forty percent of all money received will be distributed for scholarships and loans for veteran children, rehabilitation projects at Soblocke VA Medical Center, Wisconsin Veterans Home at King, Wisconsin, Christmas gift shop at Soblocke VA Medical Center, Camp American Legion, a rehabilitation center for veterans, National Child Welfare Foundation, all veteran affairs and rehabilitation programs. Be it therefore resolved that I, Daniel J. Bekovich, Mayor of the City of Oak Creek, do hereby proclaim May 5th, 6th, and 7th, 2017 to be poppy days in the City of Oak Creek. Be it further resolved that I encourage the citizens of Oak Creek to contribute generously for the annual poppy distribution by the American Legion posts and auxiliary 434.
Thank you very much, Kathryn. Appreciate that. We also have one to follow for buddy poppy days on May 12th, 13th, and 14th. So would you like to read that one into the record?
Certainly. Buddy poppy days, Mayor Duzek. Help me. VFW post 8482, May 12th, 13th, and 14th, 2017. Whereas the annual distribution of buddy poppies by the veterans of foreign wars of the United States, the Mayor Duzek post 8482 of Oak Creek, Wisconsin has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922. And whereas the annual distribution of buddy poppies will be held in Oak Creek on May 12th, May 13th, and May 14th. Whereas VFW buddy poppies are assembled by disabled veterans and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans. And whereas the basic purpose of the annual distribution of buddy poppies by the veterans of foreign wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Bekovich, Mayor of the City of Oak Creek, do hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through the purchase of buddy poppies on the days set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our veterans. Be it further resolved that I urge all citizens to wear a buddy poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms that we continue to enjoy as American citizens.
Thank you very much, Kathryn. And at this time, we are fortunate enough to have this year's poppy princess, Patricia Hogan, here. Patricia, would you come up? I understand you're going to present us with some poppies and we will donate to the cause. We will be the first. Thank you. Yep. Patricia, then come on back. We have a proclamation for you, okay?
You already got one.
Change this year, Tom.
Is this on?
There you go.
Patricia, on behalf of the City of Oak Creek and the entire council, we'd like to present you with this proclamation and proclaiming you the poppy queen for 2017. Congratulations. Spread the joy and please spread the word of why the poppy is important. Thank you. Okay, we got all the important stuff done. It's all downhill from here now. One more, we have a council proclamation, item number six, for the letter carriers stamp out hunger food drive day. Kathryn?
Council proclamation number 17-07, letter carriers stamp out hunger food drive day. Whereas every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food banks. And whereas the letter carriers stamp out hunger food drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve. And whereas since the pilot drive was held in 1991, more than 1.5 billion pounds of food has been collected. Whereas of all the food collected in our community stays in our community. And whereas the City of Oak Creek supports the carriers' efforts to help those in need in our community. And whereas we recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities. And whereas we also recognize the noteworthy milestone of 25 years that the National Letter Carrier Food Drive celebrates in 2017. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and common council of the City of Oak Creek do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 13th, 2017, as letter carriers' food drive day in the City of Oak Creek. And we encourage the citizens of our communities to support the food drive by placing non-perishable food items in or near your mailbox on food drive day, where your letter carrier will pick it up while delivering the mail and together helping to feed our hungry. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and the city clerk be, and she is hereby directed, to transmit a suitable copy thereof to the National Association of Letter Carriers dated the second day of May 2017.
Thank you, Kathryn. Again, we urge everybody to partake in this event on May 13th. We thank the letter carriers for putting it on. And even in a country as great as ours, there is a need for it, so please, I urge you to take part in this and give generously. Moving right along, old business. Item number seven.
Dan, I think we've got to make a motion for that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jumped right ahead. Motion, please.
Gale, move to approve council proclamation number 17-07, letter carrier stamp out hunger food drive day.
Kuzikowski, go second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kierkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving right along, old business. We have the Mayor Aldermatic appointments. Just a little bit of housekeeping on that, the appointments. Two of them do not actually need council approval, that being library and small claims. The rest will need a motion, the exception of D, which is not a standing committee of the city. So with that, any questions on the appointments? If not, we'll need a motion.
Kuzikowski will make a motion to accept the Mayor's Aldermatic appointments as listed under item seven. Excluding D. Community board?
A, C, and... A, C, F, and G.
Kiel, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kierkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along, item eight, we now come to the council president's Aldermatic appointments. Ken, comment on it? Would you like to...
No, thanks, Mayor. I think everyone maintained the post they had in the past cycle, except we have, I see, two new members who are thankfully going to split the burden a little bit this cycle, so we appreciate Alderman Lorik, Alderman Dukniak helping out and throwing in on some of these committees. I'll just go over them real quickly and just cite the chairman for the record on personnel. Alderman Toman, myself, Alderman Dukniak, capital improvements is myself, Alderman Kuzikowski, Toman. Licensing, Alderman Kierkowski will chair that with myself and Alderman Dukniak, planning commission, Alderman Kuzikowski, Lorik. Board of Health is Alderman Kierkowski, emergency government representatives, council president, myself, and Alderman Kierkowski. Parks and Rec, Alderman Kuzikowski there, traffic and safety, Alderman Dukniak in finance, myself, Alderman Toman, Alderman Lorik, I'll chair that. That's it.
Thank you. Again, thank you for your commitment. It does take time to do these committees. We realize it is part of the appointment, but again, I just want to thank you because these commissions really take the burden, a lot of burden off the council by pre-preparing for the meetings. Thank you. Okay. Brings us to... Excuse me. New business. We will be entertaining...
Then we got to move on that.
Do you, or is it appointments?
They're just... Well, no motion.
I don't think we have to move on that one.
Oh, great.
Great. But new business, we will need appointments to concur with the mayor appointments for the following boards and commissions. Border review, it is a five-year term set to expire in 2022, and that's Patricia McClary Roth is going to be reappointed there. Celebrations commission is a three-year term to expire four of 2020, Angela Pollack. Finance committee is a one-year term to expire in April of 2018, that is Zach Olson. Park and Rec and Forestry is a three-year term to expire April of 2020, and that is Mary Ann Dickman and Anne Feier. Tourism commission is a one-year term to expire four of 2018, that is Clint Wills, Kristy Bush, and Kim Jankowski. F is Board of Zoning Appeals and Housing Appeals, that is a three-year term to expire in four of 2020, it's Randy Gregrick and Lawrence Bodett. And then the Weed Commissioner is a one-year term to expire four of 2018, and that falls to our Parks, Streets, Parks, and Forestry Director Ted Johnson, who's with us tonight. Just overjoyed to have that one. Again, I did personally reach out to each commissioner. I thanked them for their time and service and made sure they wanted to continue in their posts. Each commissioner was very enthusiastic on keeping the post. Again, much needed to have these commissioners and these board people. They help direct the city and really make things easier when it hits the council level, so thank you to all of them. But with that, if you have any questions, concerns? Nothing? Not? We'll entertain a motion.
Dukniak moves to approve the Mayor's motions of the appointments A through G.
Kuzikowski, go second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kierkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
That brings us to item 10, the 2017 vendor summary report. I hope you've all had a chance to look it over, and we have Bridget here to answer any questions concerning it. Anybody have anything going on? Looks like standards, some project stuff and basic maintenance. Questions? Motion?
Gale, move to approve the 2017 vendor summary report in the amount of $276,562.22.
Kuzikowski, go second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kierkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Great, thank you, Bridget. Moving right along, treasures. We have an informational... Barb is here to summarize the treasures report on all our investing and accounts. With that, I will turn it over to Barb.
The report is as of March 31st, 2017, and is Mayor Kevich stated. It shows the account balances for investment and banking accounts for the City of Oak Creek. Our ending balance for all accounts is $41,148,197.66. Interest earned was $32,633.96. Just to kind of reiterate, as I've said in the past, the amounts you see here are not necessarily available for general purpose spending. These are just simply the balances in the accounts. Much of these funds are allocated for different purposes, to districts, distribution of tax collection and that sort of thing. Speaking of tax collections, for the month of March, we collected $3,787,040... I'm sorry, 3,700... 3,787... Let me try that again. $3,787,46.70, or 5.1% of tax levied. We have money that was allocated and gone out to the taxing jurisdictions into the other taxing jurisdictions in April. Any questions?
Questions, comments for Barb? Standard stuff. Not really, but you make it sound easy. Say the least. Again, we do have a finance committee, helps review this beforehand. Very well done. There is just a note about other taxing jurisdictions. Do you want to touch on that a little bit, Barb?
Well, by statute, you know, we collect taxes for all the other taxing jurisdictions as well as the city, and on certain dates, we have to pay a portion back to them based on the amount that they levied. So in other words, you know, we collect taxes for state, county, the city, MMSD, MATC, and the school district, and whatever their portion of what we collected is, gets paid back out to them on specific dates. So December collections get paid out in January, January collections in February, February, March collections go out in April. April and May collections go out in June, and then we finalize everything at the end of July and pay everything, make the districts whole as of August 15th. Any balances that we didn't collect, the county makes the city whole for real estate.
Thank you for that. Is there anything else? Nothing? Okay. This is actually item 11, Arden. You're up next. It's item 11. Yep. Moving right along, as Arden pointed out, we're moving on to item 12, to authorize publication of write-offs. Barb, you want to take an explanation at that?
Yep, absolutely. Every year, I request that you authorize the write-off and publication of the prior year delinquent personal property tax. So as I stated in the last item, the county makes us whole for real estate tax, but they do not for personal property tax. So a portion of it, we can write off, I mean, I'm sorry, a portion of it, we can charge back to the other taxing jurisdictions, but there's a portion that's the city's. And after the following year, the auditors had made a recommendation a number of years ago that we write it off the city's books. That does not mean we don't still attempt to collect it. You know, we turn what we can over to the collection agencies. Of course, there's some laws, you know, that we can't always do that, so if a company's bankrupt or something like that, we can't do that. So anything that we don't turn over to collections and that we don't charge back is a portion that belongs to the city that I request that you write off of the city's books. It's just kind of an accounting auditor thing. I have a couple of things attached, spreadsheet that shows the individual amounts and totals, and there's, one column is for the portion that we write off. So again, that's only the city portion. And then the other column includes interest and penalty. It's the entire amount that's still due, including interest and penalties through the end of May, that we're allowed to publish. And that will go in the, that would go in the city's newspaper. Also attached is an actual computer-generated report out of our tax software, so that you can match up the numbers that are on the spreadsheet and see that, you know, I'm including the appropriate amounts. And then, since we had a couple of new council members, I also attached the policy on the handling of delinquent personal property tax, along with the resolution on that policy.
Great, thank you. Arden, would you like to speak? You have one citizen that wants to speak on it? Arden, I think you've been here before. Name and address.
Arden, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue.
Arden, pull the mic down.
What's that?
Pull the microphone down, boy.
It's unbelievable that we have a business that owes $2,000 in taxes, the Days Inn. The question is, do they... Is this because they've changed ownership? Or is this because they don't pay sales tax, they don't pay their water bill? Do they pay anything if they're not $2,000 owed? It doesn't make sense.
I will refer that question to... Barb?
There really is no honest, good answer to that, Arden. We make every attempt to collect from them, but there's nothing we can do really to force them, other than turn them over to a collection agency and let it be handled that way. We send them two notices before we ever turn it over to a collection agency.
I was just wondering, is this... This sounds like it's a minimal amount, $400 a year. Is this strictly inspection or engineering? Or what is this amount to? Because they're... Do they turn over the sales tax to the city?
No, this is personal property tax, so it's the tax that a business pays based on their machinery, equipment, you know, desks.
But they do pay other taxes? We've gotten collections from their sales tax, have we?
That would be the state. I can't answer that.
It doesn't even come through the city. It goes directly to the state, huh?
Correct. Correct.
This puzzles me, this whole tax collection. When a growing business like this can owe $2,000, and yet they pay other items? It apparently looks like there's a slip between the wrist and, between the city and the state. The state...
Well, and again, Arden, I'm not making any excuses or any claims on behalf of Days Inn. It could be that their corporate headquarters hasn't gotten to it, the bill got shuffled. So any number of excuses as to what happened to any of these businesses, but not our call. Again, we're just going through accounting procedures. I think Barb gave a good explanation of the write-off, because every time this does hit the paper, there's numerous questions that the city's not doing their due diligence to collect the money.
Trust me, we do.
Thank you. Mayor? Go ahead.
With regards to Days Inn, they are licensed. I mean, they have to get a license from the city, isn't the... Can't we hold that over their head and say, you don't get your license until you pay your taxes?
There is no business license in the City of Oak Creek. The only licenses, which we do use for businesses that need licenses, would be your, you know, a liquor license or health license.
But health department is involved in...
I think it's only food-related. Or maybe...
I believe you're right.
Maybe pools.
They had a swimming pool, they have a fee for that.
Well, seems like if there's a will, there's a way.
If there's a license, we withhold it until payment is made. I can double-check that one, but I don't believe there was anything we could hold for them.
Okay.
Anything else on item 12, discussion questions? Okay, with that, motion.
Gale, move to authorize the publication and write-off of the attached list of 2015 delinquent personal property tax per the city policy.
Kuzikowski, go second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kierkowski.
Great, thank you. Moving right along, we're to Streets, Park, and Forestry, item 13. Consider a motion to award 2017 27th Street free planning contract. Who's taking this one? Ted?
Thank you. If you recall, this is the item that I asked that we reject the bids for our last meeting. We did put this back out to bid, and that was because we didn't have any acknowledgement of the addendum that was given to us by the DOT kind of last minute. We did attach all the information that we received, even the late notice stuff from the DOT to this. We were able to get it out to bid. We had considerably more people pull our plan this time. We actually received five bids, and we were pretty happy with the bid that we received. It was about $10,000 less than the low bid the last time that was out, so...
Very good. Ted, just first, I'll open it up to questions or comments from the council.
For our new Alderman, this is a joint project with Franklin. I don't know if you guys are filled in at all, but...
I guess my question kind of went along the lines of Chris's. With the City of Franklin, were both foresters in on this, or was this mandated for the 27th Street plan as to what was going to be planned?
Well, it's actually part of the 27th Street plan, and it's actually a credit that was given to both us and Franklin as, you know, as payment for some of the roadway improvements. So we had actually agreed, and there was an amount of money that was credited for this. It went through CIP, and both us and Franklin had a commitment of, I believe it was $62,000 a city. We actually are splitting this project right down the middle with Franklin, so they bid out all the trees and we bid out the labor to install them. So I'm not sure exactly what the tree bid came in at with the City of Franklin, but either way, we split this down the middle. So, you know, regardless, this is a win-win for both us and Franklin.
Thank you. It's been a long time coming on a 27th Street escape plan. It's been a long time coming on a 27th Street escape plan, probably almost 10 years, but I noticed the benches are out there, some of the block walls are getting out there on both sides. Definitely progress, and you're going to probably see it look more complete as we go through. Just another step.
Yeah, we plan on starting to plant these by, hopefully, late May, early June.
Great. Anything else? Nothing? Okay, motion on 13.
Kelski, make a motion to, no, it's not my district, so I'm sorry, I'll withdraw that.
Oracle motion to award the 2017-27 Street tree planting contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Property Solutions Construction, at an estimated cost of $20,000, $20,480.
Ms. Kelski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along and staying with engineering, consider to award at the intersection of Drexel and 10th, signalization. Mike, you are just making my day here on this one. You want to take it?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is a project that was a, kind of a long time coming, was established in October of 2015 with the traffic signal warrant, study that traffic signals were basically confirmed what a lot of people suspected, that traffic signals were warranted at that intersection. And this, of course, is all related to the development of the Drexel corridor and the Drexel interchange, where seen traffic take a significant jump. But it also is related to the residential neighborhood to the south and the industrial park to the north at 10th and Drexel. At any rate, we did get authorization to work with Traffic Analysis and Design, Inc., engineering consultant, to produce the plans and the bid documents. They did so, we advertised, and we received two bids. We were a little disappointed in the number of bids received. Thought we'd get maybe anywhere from, you know, four, four to six bids. However, we were fairly happy with the bid prices that we got. So we were well within budget, and the low bidder is MP Systems, Inc., at 285,500. So the recommendation is to award to MP Systems.
Great, thank you, Mike. Comments, Steve?
Start date, by chance?
We have a contract time of no sooner than June 15th, must be complete by October 15th. We wanted to have school out before they started the work on the intersection.
I'll echo what the mayor said. Thank you.
Mike, for Greg and Rich's benefit, can you give a quick recap of what that intersection works going to look like, what's going to happen there?
Right. On the eastbound and the westbound approaches along Drexel, we will have the left-turn lanes modified slightly. There will be designated right-turn lanes for traffic turning northbound and southbound. And we will have a turn lane, a left-turn lane at both the north and the south approaches as well. A lot of this we're able to do with just very minor modifications to the traffic lanes, and that helped keep the costs down to some degree as well.
Expect like ongoing lane closures or intermittent, or what do you think there?
It will be, it will be open to traffic, but yes, there, it's, you know, it will be a bit of a bottleneck at times.
And Mike, remind me too, I don't remember what the CIP had pegged for the budget on this.
We, if I recall, we were somewhere between 500 and 600,000, that included the design. So, so, so we've, we've got ample funds.
Are 285, that's strictly installation and material?
Yes.
Do you remember what planning and design and traffic cost us?
Yeah, the design was somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000.
All-in, we're probably half, maybe?
Yes.
Ever taken what we expected?
Yes.
Did you design it? How's my career?
Uh, no, we had a consultant, but it was kind of a 50-50 proposition. Our design engineer, Matt Sullivan, our staff design engineer, did the lane widening plans, traffic signal analysis, did purely the traffic signals.
Great job, very good. Greg, this is really good news for you, let me tell you.
Your neighbor has to be happy today.
Oh, yeah.
I'll tell you the truth, I mean, the semis coming out of the north really are risking life and limb.
Yeah, it is, and, you know, the fire chief can probably attest to it, they've probably been there a number of times for fender benders and injury accidents, so. If there's no other discussion or questions, motion.
Kelski, make a motion to award the West Drexel Avenue and South 10th Street intersection signalization unit price contract to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, MP Systems, at the estimated cost of $285,500. Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along and staying with engineering, resolution for a stormwater management best practice, Second District, Mike.
This is the stormwater management agreement for the IKEA building and site development. And this is really the, the standard agreement that developing properties enter into with the city, where they have stormwater management features. These generally consist of detention ponds, and those need ongoing maintenance. And this document is required so that the property owners do take care of the maintenance, they do the documentation, and the agreement is kind of a safeguard that if they are negligent in those efforts, that the city can cause that work to be done and charge them the costs.
Motion. Questions, discussions?
Oracle, move to adopt resolution number 11809-050217, approving a stormwater management practices, maintenance agreement for the IKEA retail building.
Bill, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Excellent. Moving right along, we have a resolution for the American Transmission Company in the Fifth District on an existing easement. Mike?
There was a request by the American Transmission Company for a, what is termed a supplemental easement, and this is for, it is related to the proposed substation that lies directly south of the Oakview Business Park, and somewhat related to an item on, on the last agenda, which was an easement for We Energies. This is for the American Transmission Company, and what it is, is they have an existing easement that allows for four of those, the, the really tall towers, for their transmission lines. They need this supplemental agreement, because they're going to do some work out there, they're going to replace one of the existing four towers, they need to replace it with two. Therefore, the need for the supplemental easement. And I've got it up on the screen if there's, if there's any questions, but for point of reference, this is the, the cell and chewies is what you see up at the upper right, and then one of the main detention ponds is what you see at the, at the lower left. You see the schematic of, of the future substation. The two yellow dots represent the, the replacement towers, and then just to the west of that is the existing tower that's going to be removed. This is all part of the infrastructure that is needed for that substation. American Transmission Company has offered $5,000 if the city were to approve this easement, so that would be revenue directly to the city.
Questions, discussions?
Well, this is just moving stuff right along on the lineup, of course, they already have.
Okay. Motion on 16.
Bill, move to approve resolution 11810-050217, granting to American Transmission Company, LLC, a supplemental easement to allow an additional struc, allow an addition structure in the existing easement at 641 West Oakwood Road.
Ms. Kelski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye. Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. Moves this along right to Licensing Committee. Turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Okay. The following items were received after the License Committee met. Tentative recommendations are as follows. Item 17, Kirkowski makes a motion to grant an operator's license to the 18 individuals listed on the agenda favorable background reports were received.
Bill, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
18, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a transient merchant license to True Green, 8120 West Bradley Road, Milwaukee, and to the two salespersons listed on the agenda favorable background reports were received.
Bill, seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
19, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a transient merchant license to Active Environmental, 17919 West Lincoln Avenue, New Berlin, Wisconsin, and the six individual salespersons listed on the agenda favorable background reports were received.
Catherine, I just had a question for you.
Certainly.
They're using obviously corporate offices for their addresses, is that typical?
It is typical. Last year, in fact, I believe there was one that listed a Florida address.
Need a second. Seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item 20, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a special event permit to Kristin Kowalewski, Oak Creek Tourism Commission, for Drexel Town Square Movies in the Park scheduled for Thursday, June 23rd, July 21st, August 28th, and September 21st, 2017.
Kelski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item 21, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a special event permit to Caleb Widmire, Agent Harvest Community Church, for Drexel Town Square Summer Concert Series scheduled on Thursday, August 3rd, 10th, 17th, 24th, and 31st, 2017.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 22, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a special event permit to Nardeep Gill, Agent Shardi Kala, 6K Run Walk be held at the Oak Creek High School Track Stadium on August 5th, 2017.
Bill, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And finally, item 23, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a special event permit to Kristin Kowalewski, Agent Oak Creek Tourism Commission, for Drexel Town Square Summer Solstice Festival scheduled for June 17th, 2017.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Well, it wasn't the final item here, sorry. The following item was presented to the License Committee at their meeting on 4/27/17. Minutes are attached, recommendation is as follows. Item 24, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a temporary Class B, Class B Wine License to Carolyn Bukiewicz, Agent Oak Creek Celebrations Commission, for Drexel Town Square Summer Solstice Festival scheduled for Saturday, June 17th, 2017.
Bill, seconds.
Roll call.
Just a question before. Did we have any inputs from all these items that were taken up from surrounding restaurants in Drexel Town Square? Was there any comments or any inputs?
They, they had a, the Tourism Commission and the Celebrations had a, an informational meeting last week, Monday, across the hall. They invited all the businesses in to explain exactly what would take place at these festivals, reasoning behind it, and what they were hoping to accomplish with it, and what they actively wanted the businesses to participate in and take part of. Businesses were informed and did have ample chance to come in and input to it. So hopefully, they'll, they'll mark themselves in such a way to take advantage of the crowds that will come.
No big objections to the permit?
Uh, no, you know, we, we express that their success is our success, we're not there to take sales from them, we're there to add to them. So, there are some events that are going to have to be addressed, I believe it's just the summer solstice that will be serving domestic beer, specialty stuff. We're hoping that people seek it out at the businesses.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
With, we discussed the summer solstice at our License Committee meeting, and Krista, the deputy clerk, is, she's making a inquiry with the Department of Revenue with regards to, say, Bel Air Cantina, who may wish to sell and then let items be carried out of their establishment, versus only keeping it inside. So as part of the festival, people would come and then be able to go out with their stuff. And we've also talked, they're also looking into potential parking issues, alternatives to where the people can park, various locations and stuff like that, to kind of make sure that, you know, the festival goers don't take up all the parking and the apartments and, you know, stuff like that. So they're looking all into, into that stuff, too.
All valid considerations, and again, it being the inaugural year, there's going to be some bugs to iron out along the way as we start these events and find out what works and what'll carry through and what'll be adjusted. So, a little bit of a learning curve on, on the city's end as well as the businesses.
Question?
Chris?
Answered that series. That's, there were some questions about potentially putting it in a hole, but we're not, we voted on it here tonight, everything's okay there?
Uh, right, it's another thing that policy will dictate along the way, but as of right now, you know, we're trying to draw the crowds in and activate the square. The ultimate goal is to activate that square and get people in it, so, you know, each one will be vetted through and we'll see the success of it, take it from there.
Oh, is, who's, is there a group working on policy for?
There, there is an internal group with, you know, clerk's office is taken into account, tourism's taken into account, as well as the management team here, and they're looking at it as a whole.
Hey, there was one other item that came up, and just in brief conversation with regards to the summer solstice, is that's supposed to go to 11 o'clock, and we brought up the noise ordinance, and they're aware of the, any potential issues that, so if there is an issue, they'll, they're willing to end it early or work with any people that were there. So we've, we've even addressed that potential issue, too.
You're right, that was brought up, because there is a 10 o'clock noise curfew, they were asking to extend an hour on that particular date. These are all the particulars that we're going to have to kind of work through, through, lack of a better word, trial and error. But I do think they're going in the right direction, and they're going to get the flavor of what works and what the people want, so.
Mayor, I, I have a question in regard to some of the details of the actual event itself. Is it Celebrations that, that is coordinating the details for this event?
It's actually a collaboration between tourism and celebrations, and it's tourism, did I say celebrate? It's tourism and celebrations, and it's tourism's first year through. So everybody's kind of defining where they can help and share goals, objectives, and, and resources, and, and who takes responsibility.
A concern I have is, City Hall closes at 8:00 PM, Public Library's at 8:00 PM as well.
Correct.
And if you have a thousand people here attending the concert, that need to use restroom facilities.
They intend to keep it open, given the rest, the restroom facilities here, and They intend to keep it open, given the restroom facilities here and keep it open through. I believe 10 o'clock.
And summer solstice will have ample porta potties.
And that's, that's also true.
Okay.
Good point.
Rich, if, Kristen can show you the game plan they've laid out for the site plan and amenities.
Just having done this for 15 years at the community center, understand the traffic that goes to the bathrooms and you wouldn't want the area of businesses inundated with festival goers going into their particular places of business just to use the bathroom.
Part of the informational meeting that was brought up to say to the businesses, make it perfectly clear that you're not public restrooms and we'll try to get directional signs as where to point the people for public restrooms. And as Alderman Gale mentioned, it is the event where they are going to bring in not porta potties, but actually the trailers.
Sure, good.
A roll call? Did we have a second?
We did.
Okay, anything further discussion? Not? Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
It brings us now to item 25. We will consider a motion to convene and to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent E, to consider a second amendment to the tax increment District Number 12 Financing Development Agreement with IKEA Properties, Inc. Ken?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill move to convene and to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, to consider a second amendment to the tax incremental District Number 12 Finance Development Agreement with IKEA Property, Inc.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Okay, now convene and to close session and we will return shortly upon finishing our discussion.
Bill moves to re-giving it to open session.
Bill, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Item 27, we're going to consider a resolution approving a second amendment to the tax increment District Number 12. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew Vickers, our city administrator, for a brief explanation of what we're going to do.
Thank you, Mayor. As everybody in, in this room and a lot of folks outside in the room know, on last, last May, 2016, the council approved a development agreement with IKEA Property Incorporated for a 300, approximate 300,000 square foot retail store, the first of its kind in the state of Wisconsin. We're really happy to have that development and all the things that may go around it too, as a spur there. The development agreement called for creating a tax increment financing district and utilizing that tool to help incentivize the development along. And the way that that development agreement was structured was virtually a pecking order of how the property tax revenue from the project, which otherwise would not be there from the, without the project being there, how that would be divvied up. The parties agreed to certain infrastructure that needed to be built to facilitate the development as we know it now, South IKEA Way. And South IKEA Way is, for all intents and purposes, ready to be, you know, ready to be completed and opened up here soon. Paving will follow. So, with that, what that pecking order calls for though is paying for the principal and interest on the agreed upon infrastructure first, then a $25,000 annual administrative fee to the city for auditing and some other, you know, staff time involved. And then lastly, whatever is left over after the principal and interest payments and the city administrative fee goes to the developer in the form of a developer funded or a pay-as-you-go financing model for the rest of the district, the life of the district. What we found was, delightfully so, as we're rounding out and have really shaped what infrastructure costs we were looking at, was with construction bids and things coming in as they have, we had about $2.3 million in savings under the original project budget agreed to by the developer and the city. So, for a period of months now, we've been working with the developer to maximize that budget because as the agreement calls for the pecking order, the city is not at all motivated to have less principal and interest payments because the pecking order assumes that the lesser amount of principal and interest payments, the more of the developer financed tax increment monies annually goes back to the developer. So, the city is motivated to maximize those dollars. Through discussions with our, with our partner, we've arrived at agreeing to a continuation of infrastructure over to 27th Street, underground utility infrastructure. And that's something IKEA did not have to agree to. And, and that's, that's really the, you know, good sign for, for this partnership and what it, what it has become and what it, what it is. They did not have to agree to do that. There is some benefit for IKEA for some of that underground infrastructure, but the majority does not benefit IKEA Property, Inc. IKEA Property on the flip side of it, in trying to partner and maximize those dollars, also ran into some significant costs. So, with the city's underground utility installation, as well as the request for dollars that IKEA would like to utilize to offset some of their site preparedness and mainly stormwater work and state and federal compliance measures that they had to take that they did not foresee, we've been able to more or less maximize that original project budget. We've actually come in under the original project budget. So, we're going to continue on with the hopeful approval of the council tonight of this amendment. The city is and has been enabled to continue on with infrastructure over to 27th Street, which is really paramount for the development area and Northwestern Mutual Property moving forward. So, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Andrew? Okay, seeing none, we can entertain a motion on resolution number 27.